Actually, I don't know.
Right, Dave, you brought us a big blow.
He's safe.
I don't know, she had a bunch of them. But it was a rabbit charge. Right? When she was four thousand. Before her. Yeah. Well, no, she won't.
What did you hear? Amanda. I'm like, what?
Well.
That's the one thing.
She's gonna have like some. Yeah.
I know what's happening.
Well. And then they're just saying, maybe they're. I have the deal upstairs.
I know she's.
It's all right. I don't know, this whole slide right here. There was that. Maybe looks at the.
Oh, that's. Welcome to the September tenth, twenty twenty five. Special city council meeting. Has now come to order. Would you all please rise and say. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlie, would you say a little call, please?
Becky Curtis.
Here.
Gina Reeve. Here. John Breckenridge. John Feiger.
Yep.
Mark Carman.
Here.
All right, that takes us to unfinished business. Reconsideration, the first reading of Bill twenty twenty five dash thirty. Shelly.
Bill twenty twenty five dash thirty, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Missouri, repealing the current electric rates and establishing new electric rates for consumers of the Cameron Municipal Utility.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty five dash thirty on a first reading. Go ahead.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor, Council, um, the last regular meeting, the council passed our balanced budget for next year. And this included all of the utilities adjustments in that budget. Um. On the electric side, this bill did not pass or fail. Um, so we are wanting re reconsideration of this bill. Um. Myself, Mark Carmen, uh, we've been looking at this. We would be eliminating five hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the electric budget. That affects water, sewer, and uh, all the departments within general fund. Um, it will also eliminate or reduce all the capital projects for next year. Um, Carmen and Mark have went through and uh, have some information they would like to share with the council. Carmen?
Um. We went, went through the numbers and by not having that half million dollars of revenue, we have to readjust our allocation within our funds to support general fund and a lot of basic departments in our city structure. Um. So in order to get just the electric fund to balance, I removed all of the capital projects for the electric fund and reduced some um, pretty important projects or like wire transformers, reduced the amount that we had budgeted for those items. We do have a pretty intricate structure with what we call our overhead allocation and gross receipts that transfer into general fund. So by reducing the electric fund portion, that create, we also have to increase the water and increase the sewer portions to make those um, adjustments work.
Would that be, would that be an additional to what we already adjusted? As we, when we had more raised water.
Well, it wouldn't adjust the rates. It would just adjust what we had planned to do next year. You know, like, you know, like the extra amount of supplies for personal services that may have been in, in progress. But that trickles down to that general fund will be short a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. Um, I mean, the whole budget for next year will be done, will be reduced by that. I have copies here for council if they'd like to see. If you'd like to see that detail.
And from what I understand, we received, the city received a rate increase last February already. So we've already been paying higher electric rates to Black Clay? Is that true?
Yes.
Yes. Since April of last year, and there was also an increase for prior year. All right. Two point eight percent. So it's been going up substantially, and we anticipate that there will also be another raise in April of next year.
Yep.
So.
What are you recommending, Mark? Uh.
So this, the rates that we had presented are what we were recommending. Um, just, just as a, a side note on that, the lion's share of this rate increase is going to be focused for large commercial and industrial people. Um. As it stands right now, we have a demand rate spelled out in our current rates. Uh, thirty dollars per KW for industrial and twenty dollars, twenty five dollars per KW for large commercial. The proposed rate is six dollars per KW for industrial and large commercial. So it is a significant reduction in what we already have in our ordinance, but we have not ever charged the demand.
What is demand?
So demand is essentially, uh, how do I want to explain this to be very simple? Since there is no, electricity doesn't have, there's no large scale battery, no storage of electricity. Every time you turn on a light, a generator somewhere has to ramp up to compensate for electricity. So the turning on a light bulb in a house or turning on a bay of lights at the marijuana grove itself creates a lot bigger demand than your house does. So that is what demand is essentially. It is to compensate for the inner current of large industrial motors, lights, all of that.
How have we never charged a demand yet?
I, I tried to look back, and as far as I could go back was twenty twenty two, and this was, this demand charge was in there then. Um.
But we haven't exceeded their grid?
We've always just paid the demand. So we get charged a demand charge, lots of demand charges from Black Clay, but almost,
the word subsidizing.
Almost half of our bill is.
We're subsidizing big business?
Yes. So last, last month, we pick up the demand and our kilowatt hour charge basically to everybody. We spread that across residential, commercial, industrial, instead of allocating that towards the drivers of that demand. Last, last month, our bill was over six hundred thousand dollars and half of that was to be paid.
Well, that's not sustainable.
This last month was our largest electric bill ever from Black Clay, six hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, usually it's about four hundred.
Right, yeah.
How much would the net change be for the average homeowner? Uh, for residential, residential.
It was just under five dollars per month for a residential uh, that uses two thousand kilowatt hours.
But that doesn't include the other two that we just raised last time as well. So you're probably dropping another twenty twenty five if you combine it. My question is, okay, so five hundred and thirty thousand is what you're saying would be short?
Right, that we reduced from electric.
Right, okay. So if we took five thirty, that's saying, if, if I'm thinking math right here, that's saying that, um, trying to figure out. So like ten point six million would be five percent. So we're saying gross revenue would be ten point six million off electric, right? And it's eight point four unless we raise.
No, hopefully it's the rate. It would be eight point four.
That, that amount of eight, eight point two million is the electric revenue with the reduction in. I mean, reducing the budget, it would come down to eight point two million.
Versus?
It was probably eight point eight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so our proposed revenue was eight point eight seven four.
Does the average commercial account pay twice what a, a residence, a residential customer would pay?
Well, there's, uh, Mark is talking about large industrial.
So our, our.
Not the small.
Our, our rate proposal actually changes to make small commercial, which would be your downtown type businesses, small businesses, the same as a residence.
If you're paying a hundred and twenty five bucks a month for electricity, and then you use four, or even if it's five percent, it's gonna be six dollars and twenty five cents. So these large commercial, large, and this is, would this be comparable to a residential, would it be a small business? They'd be paying somewhere around that? I'm not, I'm just, I just took another.
The, the demand would be the larger portion of that.
Okay, so the large, the larger industrial, uh, you know, you said the lion's share. I'm just trying to elaborate. What's the definition of the lion's share?
Example of just the prison.
Okay.
The prison, their bill will go up about six thousand dollars a month. Just because of the demand portion.
Okay.
They are our, our largest customer.
Okay, from, what's your normal bill?
Uh.
Do you have?
I don't know what the bill is on my hand.
I, I think one of the prisons' normal bill is probably between fifteen and sixty thousand.
Okay. So around ten percent. Okay.
Where if, if we were to charge the current demand that we have in there in our ordinance right now, it would be about thirty five thousand dollars additional. Part of the way it's at a current.
What's the average? I know what my electric bill is, but what's the average electric bill for residential? Cause it's not a hundred dollars. I know that.
Say an average probably between two and three hundred.
For just like any resident?
Yeah, I'm just saying like, I know we, we just paid four hundred. So five percent on top of that is gonna be twenty bucks.
Twenty bucks.
I don't know if that's normal or abnormal. We, we keep our air pretty high. You know, cause I'm chief, you know that.
But it's really hard to compare residents to each other because there's so many different habits.
Right.
And houses, it's.
And this.
We, we do, we don't compare residents against each other.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not asking that. That's why I was asking. So.
That's why I was saying the two thousand, two thousand kilowatt hour usage, which would be on the high end of normal, I would say for a, a family of four. Depending, you know, that's, that's five dollars. It's actually like forty five.
Two hundred bucks.
Ten dollars. Five percent.
I'm just trying to think back to the last time that I, that I ever paid a two hundred dollar bill, new addition to our, so you exactly what this is. Do they put that on the bill?
Mm-hmm.
Does that?
It tells you right there how much kilowatt you use.
Previous reading.
How much it is a day?
Yeah. And have, and kilowatts. Per kilowatt.
Yeah.
I look at my bills, my landlord, my tenants did, mine is less.
Yeah.
They had a problem and they didn't know it. They had to dish out the four hundred and five hundred dollar a month to that thing though.
For air conditioning.
And then they wanted me to pay it. I'm like, no, I got you a new hot water heater. It's like, no.
You bragging about your new hot water?
No, I'm. That wasn't expensive. Uh, no, it's just that they, they're, they're, they live in the same type of duplex I do. And they went up, we pay about two hundred dollars a month.
Two thousand kilowatt hours would be two hundred and fifty eight dollars. Two thousand kilowatt hours for residents would be two hundred and fifty eight dollars. Plus tax.
My business has more electric in it. Um, I was just paying all that last night, so yes. My life, my business, but sometimes my, my home is a fire in my business. I don't know much about that.
So that is your business. I mean, it's the usage, it's just whatever the usage is on each property. So this determines the kilowatt hour. So is there any other questions? Anybody have anything they wanna? So this, this completes our, our, also our transition on, on making other rates uniform and doing away with the declining tiers. So that's where a lot of people have a hard time trying to figure a bill because the first forty kilowatt hours have been.
Forty nine dollars?
Uh, the first forty is thirty seven and a half cents for the first forty per kilowatt hour. Then the next nine hundred and sixty kilowatt hours is twelve point four cents. And then whether that is ten point two cents.
Right, so you're doing it, you're doing opposite, correct?
We are making it fixed at eleven point nine cents for all usage and a twenty dollar cost of service. So also that is one of the things that we don't cover out of our bill from Black Clay. We paid a twenty two hundred dollar cost of service to our bill from Black Clay.
But that was separate than this.
Uh.
What was that? We passed, we passed a million rates. I get confused.
Yeah, we're making all the same. We have.
You did all, you did, you did that cost of service. That was on water and everything. But that's already passed. That's water and.
That's just water. That's was only for water and sewer.
Okay, water and sewer.
Yeah.
But the people still gotta pay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So on, on the peak, on what's.
So we had passed. We got, we got those minimal rates up on water and sewer, and now we're separately asking for another almost five percent on the electric. Four point eight percent. So we've al- already passed that.
But we're already paid. Just passing it on.
So I can, probably not paying the other stuff. Not yet. So in our, our bill from Black Clay, just this is last month's bill. Uh, no, thanks, Mr. Speaker. Last one. So we pay base demand charge, hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Once the peak demand, eighty three thousand dollars. Seasonal demand, seventeen thousand dollars. That's just the demand portions of it. And then the twenty two hundred dollar customer charge, and then there's the total usage, which is we, this bill was six million kilowatt hours, so six point seven megawatt hours. Uh, two hundred and sixty eight dollars.
Okay, so to kind of widen out to the big picture, let's say, for example, that it doesn't get passed this time. So that means things are not going to get taken place. Um, certain uh, projects are not going to take place. But yet at the same time, Black Clay, I've known for years, they have to increase it because that's what they do. So we're still always going to have increases. Every so often, is it six months, two years?
We, we get an increase every year.
Every year, and I do know that at times the council didn't do it. I know for a fact. And so therefore the increase, when we finally have to do it because we've not done it to their, our customers, then we have to give them a bigger increase than had we done it when we, we got our increase to Black Clay. Is that a true statement?
So the other, better aspect you gotta look at it is on the tax portion. The, you know, people think utilities is a tax to the community. In fact, the utilities are paying a tax to the general fund. So we're, that is what our overhead allocation is. They help pay for all of city hall, staff, materials. Uh. So our gross tax receipts we pay to general fund are eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That's all utilities. Paying in lieu of taxes, forty thousand. Eight hundred and thirty nine thousand for the development. Sixty one thousand for the airport. Those are all additional services that you're getting from the utilities that aren't really accounted for when you just look at it as a rate. Those are the added benefits that you get that would, if you didn't have those things, would increase, you'd have to increase tax to be able to sustain where you're at, right?
Or cut costs. We always want to jump right to.
Well, what costs do we want to cut?
I don't know.
Streets.
I don't know. Well, apparently not right now.
Well, if you, if you look at what you just gave us, these are the things.
Not getting clean, because we've got.
Yes, but the, the yellow highlights are the reductions that we thought we could make and still operate.
Right.
But there, I did not reduce anything from general fund because I felt like that decision needs to come from someone other than myself. So that report that you have there only goes from um, solid waste down through general.
And at, at current, is it fifty two percent? Fifty, fifty percent?
Currently.
Strangers come from the electric department.
Yeah. And then, so with this new approach to next year's budget, we made it a more level paying bill. And it's approximately twenty four to, it's basically all twenty five percent between electric, water, sewer, and general fund.
For leveling all of it.
It would be leveling it all in one year.
A good level.
There is the option to go back and rescind the water rate that just got raised, since we're not paying that right yet. Give them another six months of relief before, and then we can send out letters with this. This is directly from Black Clay raising their rates on us. Cause quite honestly, I, I feel sorry for folks living on a fixed income right now. And that's a lot of our elderly folks in this town that have been here for a lot of years.
We've got a lot of water infrastructure that's going to have to be replaced at the next few years. Would we not build up some reserve?
Okay, so under the water fund, it has professional contracted services. That went down quite a bit. Can you explain to me a little bit what that is?
Oh, it can be any type of engineering or professional, like underground pouring that we may want to do.
Hire a contractor to, to work on something. Some of those professional services, water tower maintenance. Lot of. Anything that we do outside of city staff.
And you did that with the water one as well?
Okay.
Always. For years, Billy, once you're down like for one person in water distribution, which is sewer and water, we're down to. And you got back up a little.
We have three full time employees.
Yeah, but you're back, but, but we, we contracted a lot of things out a couple of years ago.
Yes, we did.
For that number.
And we're having to.
Right. Now we do that again. We do it in-house.
Yeah, we're having to do that again because we're short two employees. I stayed myself the other night on one of the special order main break. All that. Well, thank you. Those are things that we're trying to keep covered.
What is that? Give me a little bit of what's.
That's bingo.
Okay, so it, it was projected this, in the, this year to be eighty nine thousand, and now this next year will be twenty eight.
Right, that's, that's splitting that transfer to community development, twenty five percent. Twenty five water, sewer, electric.
So it would.
For the board, fifty percent electric, twenty five, water, twenty five.
So what, tell, give me some.
It would eliminate, yeah.
Definitely.
I'd be gone.
Real, in reality.
And a couple other folks until, Andy, be gone, Andy? Does all our utility doing?
Well, actually, it was nice. I called her about my tenant, and she says about ten minutes is looking at the account and gave me a lowdown on exactly when things happened.
She did.
And uh, she really knew how to, to explain to me and, and read whatever was in front of her. She was reading. Any other questions? No? All those in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty five dash thirty on a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Aye.
I guess that's a.
Nay.
Three in favor, zero. Three in favor to oppose. All right, that takes us to new business, discussion on budget adjustment number three.
So we have one regular final meeting left in this fiscal year, and we would like to move on to one final end of the year budget adjustment. Um. The major, I, what I feel is the major items in this adjustment is the recognition of dollars received and spent at the airport, which was over three million dollars, and that's just to date. I don't know how much more we have left to do, but I believe there's substantial completion at the airport, but that's a sizable amount of money to not include in the budget. Oh. We need to recognize the demolition of the one twelve East Third Street. We have issued payment on that project. And if you recall, we are in an agreement with Mocan Regional Council on a um, I have a loan that they have access to, and we're recognizing that revenue into general fund for that project. And then we are um, also recognizing twenty six thousand dollars that we had to pay to cover additional professional fees for that Griffin CID project. We've worked, we did borrow the one point five million dollars. Those funds were transferred to Missouri Department of Transportation in a timely manner. So that project will be going out for bid in their fall release of a project. But we're recognizing that direct expenditure for us. Then I have gone through the different funds and reallocated um, some monies that maybe one line item, we had to buy an extra set of tires we were planning on, so we had to put a thousand dollars in equipment repair. But we had a thousand dollars excess in, in, by the insurance line item. So we just kind of balance those line items out as much we, as we can. And it comes down to that in our departmental total general fund activities of an increase in expenses of a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars and a increase in revenues of a hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. So with these budgeted items, we would expect to have at this time a general fund cash reserve of approximately thirty eight percent. That's. That's, you know, for everything we have going on and moving through our community, that is a healthy balance to have. We know it's likely to be higher, but we have to start. I think twenty-five is usually. Twenty-five is a, is a good. Is it norm? Some communities that are bigger that have more industry than us could go down to ten to fifteen. Yeah, that's what I heard. But for us, uh, twenty-five to fifty percent is, is still normal. So that just tells me that if something catastrophic happened, we, we could work for approximately four months, get things figured out growing before we were totally out of luck. Or general fund only. And when you look at it in that perspective, thirty-eight percent is not a whole bunch, but it's better than five to ten. And this budget adjustment will be on for the twenty-second? This will be on the twenty-second, and this just affects the current budget worth. Any questions? This is the first time we've got to see this, looking at it. Yes, I, this was, worked out well for this, that we did not have a special just finance committee, maybe we could present this tonight as. That way you get a chance to move it over and ask questions. Hey. Ready to move on, guys? All right, that's our discussion, thank you, Carmen. Next is a resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight, Kelly.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight, a resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Cameron, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Keller Construction for an asphalt overlay project on Bobbitt Griffin Road. I will entertain a, a, a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight.
Discussion?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, as you know, Keller Construction is currently in town doing the twenty twenty-five Millen overlay project for us this year. Um, their bid did come in, we had allocated two hundred point five thousand and their bid come in at a hundred and eighty-two, which that leaves us with forty-three thousand. Um, but as Carmen was talking about, the CID, uh, Bobbitt Griffin, thirty, US thirty-six project is going to be happening next spring. I'm, uh, very worried that there's going to be a lot of truck traffic that is going to take Bobbitt Griffin Road out to BB, then get on I thirty-five. We have some problem areas out there, and I had Keller Construction give me a bid base, a base bid price of, and it was eighty thousand dollars. So that would be thirty-seven thousand dollars extra on top of the two twenty-five. I was going to take seventeen thousand out of our ten thirteen two thirty-five, which had twenty, which is basically a street maintenance materials is what this is. Which had, uh, just shy of thirty thousand in that, that way it leaves the money in there for the street crews to continue to make it out till the new money comes in in October. Um, so I was wanting to get another additional twenty thousand from the absent sales tax to complete this eighty thousand that Keller Construction had bid on to fix the Bobbitt, Bobbitt Griffin.
A little bit more detail, because I don't go out there, so I don't know.
There were some bad areas in there, there's subbase issues, so we're going to do it full depth. That is why it's ten dollars square, put it out there, we're full depth. Here it's three dollars for, so that's, you're talking two inches.
That's because the mics are going to be going over.
That's correct.
That's just from old thirty-six north to this, where the CID starts?
Correct, yes, from US thirty-six to Grand Avenue, old thirty-six. We have some problem areas out there that need some attention.
It's really breaking down fast, isn't it?
Last year, crews, you know, there were, you know, we just poured fifty, sixty yards a, a day out there, out by the shell station. You know, I, I helped out there, so, you know, we were, we needed more manpower out there, but that was the, the concrete part of, of the Bobbitt Griffin Road. This is the asphalt where it switched and passes the shell station. And Gabrielson's trucking is, they're, they're one of the reasons why they're doing a number on that road out there.
I hope they are.
To get those big tow trucks, plus pulling a semi, so you're talking a lot of weight.
Sounds like we might be doing a lot of fixing up in the future with that kind of activity.
I noticed they're doing some digging on, on the east side.
The east side of.
Oh, on bumper.
Yeah, like, like.
Is that just connecting, have those lights, have all of them been there?
No, that's.
I wonder if I feel crazy or anything.
That looks like our capital project right here.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, so we talked about what you needed done, but what happens if we don't need it?
Probably going to cost a whole lot more money next year in the long run, and possibility, possibility we might get bad enough that we might have to actually close all the rest of the road.
Well, I always like to kind of, you know, okay, we need this, but what if we don't? Like, you know, what happens? What does it look like? What can it look like? And since you were talking about Gabrielson, and then it could be a lot of semi-traffic from thirty-five over.
Six to thirty-six to.
Thirty-five.
To BB highway.
Yes, um, that's, even with it being fixed, we could still have a lot of traffic.
Is there anything additional that could be done to the road to secure even more in that area?
When they mill it, when we mill it out, or when they, Keller Construction mills it out, I'm going to have street crews follow them, and they are going to dig the subbase out another foot, and we're going to add some more base rock.
Okay.
Okay, so you think that'll help out out there?
Okay, it'll help out those spots, I'm not saying that there won't be some more, they'll fill up.
Right.
As we get older.
So I'm just thinking, what can we do? I'd rather do it one time down to their business or whatever. A little more, since they're already going to be here, already going to be doing it, rather than continuously, every year, you happen to come back and go, hey, I need another eighty thousand, I need another eighty, because that. No, I understand, it still may happen, and that's what I'm asking, if there's anything else that he knows of.
With the, with the CID going on, if we, uh, if that road was having to shut down because so bad, you know, we, we might look into doing a full depth Millen overlay after the CID is completely done, we might redo that whole asphalt section through there, that would be a possibility.
Is that something the CID would pay for?
Can't go outside their own boundaries.
I didn't know if it was.
Comfort lane, uh, the street that's just right south of McDonald's.
Yeah.
That's where the CID is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
So since Keller's got their, a lot of their overhead already paid for for this other project, this is a, a pretty good deal to do this.
Yeah, well, it costs money to mobilize, correct? And that way we're not, we're not paying for the mobilization.
And market.
We're having market.
And replacement on this stretch of South Chestnut where we, where we put in water main now.
All right, we'll continue. All those in favor of passing resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Passes by the favor of your folks. That takes us into, is that good, that discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah.
We're not going to have any, um, comments. Staff, I have one thing I'd like to say with staff here. Okay, this is just something that was passed on to me from Paul Beckwood, and he was talking about the city hall, and he had noted that there was water leakage in the basement and the foundation. He was recommending, um, to do a French drain, dig that out, do a French drain, couple of sub pumps or whatever, and, and seal that if it's not already been sealed. Now, that's not from Mark Carr, the dentist, that's from Paul Beckwood, who's worked with it before in our.
So it already has French drains and sub pumps, or is it?
It does.
Yeah.
Well, he said that he, he had.
But there are some cracks in there, see that?
Okay, so they just need to be. Okay, so anyway, that's, I'm just relaying that. Don't pretend to be an authority on it. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Did anybody else in the council want to make their asking question? With that, I will entertain, uh, we're moving, I'll entertain a, a motion to enter a second meeting for attorney, client, and personnel.
Second.
Thank you for this. Yes, Gina Reed Heather, yes, Don Breckman, Don Fire, give it to Mark Carr.
Yes.
Guys?
Sorry you couldn't stay.
Me too.